You didn't tell me?
Yep.
Okay. Call the meeting to order, please rise for the political agents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Boss? Pipia?
Here.
Graham?
Here.
Hughes?
Here.
Frye?
Here.
Schroller?
Here.
Throm?
Here.
Barnes?
Here.
Seven oh, we have a four.
All right, the first item is the approval of minutes from the regular meeting that was recessed and then continued on December 30th. And there's copies on your desk that includes the amendments from Darlene and Terry Hughes. So in a term of motion to approve this amended, if you're okay with those. And if anybody has any other amendments.
Moved approved minutes of the December 23rd, 2019 along with the recess meeting of...
December 30th.
December 30th. With amended changes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh. And I would just like to say that I've really enjoyed serving the city for the last almost seven years and enjoyed serving with you council members and the staff and all the volunteers that makes Marysville a great small town. With that being said, I'm done.
I would like to read the, um, from the Marshall County Clerk, the results of the election, which was held in November 14th, 2019. And the election results are Mayor Jason Barnes, Treasurer Kenneth Kikefer, Council Ward One Gina Graham, Council Ward Two Keith Baikman, Council Ward Three Kevin Throm, Council Ward Four Todd Frye.
All right. Up front.
So Cindy can take a picture.
Oh, I can't take a picture, your head won't be there. So sorry, I am terrible. I get that prom pictures with no heads.
Is that one for Darlene?
Yes.
If you'd take it with me.
If you would like. I'll take it.
I'll just read the flag.
Okay.
Presented to Carla Grun, Council Member Ward One, 2013 to 2015. Mayor, 2015 to 2019. In recognition of outstanding service to the community, City Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla.
For doing everything as mayor and as, uh, and as a council member of Ward One, we really appreciate your service.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll run before you. Here, I'll read it. Thanks, Carla.
Okay. So, the new incoming, the four council people should please stand. Raise your hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and that will, and I will faithfully perform the duties of councilman of the City of Marysville, Kansas, so help me God. Kevin?
Yes.
Todd? Gina?
Yes.
Keith? You are installed. Now. Mr. Mayor. I do have his thing.
I have his thing. Right. Or use it. This one is Keith's.
Got it upside down.
Read Terry's rights, too.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and Constitution of the State of Kansas, and I will faithfully perform the duties of mayor of the City of Marysville, Kansas, so help me God. All right, we're off and running.
First on the myth is, on the agenda is, uh, public comments. They may want to get up for five minutes of public comment. No? Okay, business and discussion items. First up, we have legal holiday for Native American Indians.
The man Merle Whiteside and his son came into my office on the eighth and they are proposing a resolution and they have gone to the Congress three times to have a national holiday for Native Americans. This man feels that it is important for our nation to recognize them as we have other legal holidays. And they're collecting resolutions from cities for them to take along, and they're going again in January. So he just wanted to know if the City of Marysville was interested in doing that. I didn't prepare the resolution, but I would have to do that and send it on before our next meeting, so that's why it's within here. So I, it's up to you one way or the other, it doesn't make any difference. There are some samples from other cities.
What are council's thoughts, discussion on this?
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I see no reason not to do it. Do you want a motion?
I wouldn't.
Um, I would move, we, we move forward with drafting a resolution in support of the Native American Indian Day on the 15th of January. And ask the mayor to sign.
Second.
Okay. Question second. Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Uh, next up, we have the community playground hours, um, which is kind of a subject that could, the problem that we had.
I don't want to rub this to Cindy and Austin. You know, a lot of us spent a lot of time on it. I know my son, when he was in grade school, even helped with it, you know, they soaked the screws and stuff that went in it, you know. As far as I'm concerned, after dark, especially as late at night as what that fire was, there shouldn't have been anybody in that playground anyway. So I think we need to make a resolution or something that states that the park is open from dusk, dawn to dusk, period. Anybody caught in there afterwards will get fined, end of story.
Do we have any rule in place as far as the, um, is that for the park at large?
No, 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 that's just the community.
What I was gonna ask about is the, um, shelter house there. I know there's birthday parties there frequently during the summer. I assume nobody has night birthday parties there. Is there, is there light in that shelter house?
There's electricity in one of them. There, there's no lights in the shelter house, um, but, I mean, there's street lights around it.
Right, I just, I just, the only time I could thought anyone would potentially use it, really, after dusk hours.
But you know, when, when summer gets here, I mean, it's nine, ten o'clock at night, two, before it gets dark, so.
That, and, um, we're kind of in an iffy area because we allow people to live down there for a week at a time, so to tell those people, minus the playground, to not go eat at one of our...
But posting this would let, and would let the officers have some discretion and hopefully prevent it.
Yep, yep. So, I mean, if you, if you, if the council so wished to change the hours, all it requires is a motion. We didn't find any resolution or any ordinance to show that six AM to 10 PM was enforced that way. It was probably done just one meeting, somebody made a motion.
Is there a sign or anything down there?
There is.
Okay. I've been there a while.
Can we put a gate on the playground so they can't get in there without climbing over the fence?
That fence is pretty easy to climb.
Well, I know, but it might discourage somebody, I don't know.
I don't know about that.
Okay.
There's a lot of upset people about what happened down there, or, you know, so.
Is there stuff being done to fix it?
Yes, it's gotta go through the insurance process. That's, that's what's holding us up. We, we have the architect, the original architects, basically using their plans to tell us how much of what materials we need.
And we're gonna clean it all up and scoop up all the contaminated?
Yep, that'll be a part of, that'll be a part of the cleanup.
Mr. Mayor, I move we change the hours of the playground to dusk to dawn, dawn to dusk, excuse me. And anybody caught in there, you know, afterwards, subject to a fine.
How much is a fine?
Todd, do you, can I? Todd, do you have any repercussions if people are in the playground after hours?
You guys set the hours and the fine a long time ago, back when we first built it.
So there's a fine in place?
There was a fine then.
There's a fine in place? Okay.
But, uh, you'd have to research, I'm not sure.
Or trespassing? I mean, that's trespassing carries a fine.
Yeah, it's one of those criminal trespassing, criminal property things.
Okay.
And along with that, is there any way we can put some more lighting up around the exterior of that park? Just that playground area? Right now, there's currently...
Does he vote on that?
Or needs first?
Motion?
Yeah, we still need a vote, yeah.
Yeah, we'll take that up first.
Okay.
We all need to ask us to go ahead and set a fine, set a stiff fine, make people want to do that.
As part of the motion?
Yeah, as part of, as part of the motion. I'd like to see some more lights set in there, too. At least two more to towards...
You wanna set the fine, how much should the fine be?
They're gonna research it.
Well, I don't know.
Chief thought maybe we should go ahead and set it in this motion and it would res, it override whatever was previous.
Oh, I see.
Two hundred dollars?
Yeah. Make it stay. I mean, there's no reason to be in there.
How much was the fine then?
We don't know.
We don't know.
Sure, but we, it's probably, I don't know, fifty?
Fifty bucks, yeah, probably.
Could have a first offense, I don't know how big you wanna go, whatever. You made the motion.
Up two, I mean, I don't know. Well, that leaves, it does have a lot of discretion if you do up two. Yeah.
What do you think?
I think two hundreds.
Yeah.
Two hundred dollars.
So the motion is that the playground hours will be dawn to dusk, anyone caught afterwards, the fine is two hundred dollars.
Can we post it multiple places, too?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
I'll make a second.
I really, I wonder about the fact that that's fine, except for if some young kid gets in there and they don't have... That's a stiff fine. I think if somebody's in there and they're trespassing and they're of legal age and what have you, I can understand two hundred dollars, but if kid throws frisbee in there and all of a sudden somebody wants to get him because he crawled in there to get his frisbee, that's a little harsh.
Yep.
On a kid. That's my opinion.
Our city prosecutor would have discretion to plea things out, correct?
So would the officer finding there. Yes.
Writing the ticket.
Yeah. The, this, if, if passed more, gives an officer the ability to go in, okay, you're in here with a can of gas, I don't think you're in here, um, trying to get your frisbee out.
Get your frisbee back.
Yeah, I have a motion in the second.
Any more discussion?
A second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Did that include the amount of the fine?
Yeah, it was part of the motion.
Opposed.
Six more.
Mr. Mayor, also along with that, I'd like to see if we can get some more lighting installed around that playground. Currently, there's only two lights that shine into it, I think we need to put at least two more.
And I, I don't know if we can make it pretty targeted on there so it doesn't flood out into where like the tent camping is, that should be doable, just so that way if people are camping, it'd be unawake.
Directional lighting.
Okay, at least, you can...
At least two more, to be trenched in around it.
Okay. So to increase, those are west star lights. To do that, I would need another motion, uh, 'cause that, 'cause you guys set the street lights.
Right.
Okay.
Can you, can we, okay.
I'll come back with a number.
Can you come back with a number and some ideas? And you, I mean, you might get down there and go, well, actually...
Maybe we need three, yeah.
Yeah, a third one in this area would be blacked out.
I can bring back that one.
That'd be great.
Okay, next on the agenda is a request to waive the building permit fee on the Ag Building, Pam Denkberge and Dennis Guy, Denise.
Denise.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city staff. My name is Pam Denkberge and I have the privilege of serving the patrons of Marysville Public Schools as the President of our Board of Education. With me this evening is our District Superintendent, Dr. Denise Scott. As many of you are aware, over the last several years, USD 364 has had the opportunity to complete several phases of renovation and construction as, as the result of a bond issue passed by this community. One of the main conversations of that campaign was safe and secure schools. Due to varied reasons, after completion of all of the main bond issue phases, we are left with funds that will allow us, along with a community partner, the opportunity to move forward with the construction of an attached, the keyword there is attached, agricultural vocational technical complex building, allowing us to keep all of our students under one roof. We come to you this evening to ask you to consider waiving the approximate $2,515 building permit that is associated with the construction of this new facility. For the most part, the district's taxed patrons are the city's taxed patrons, and while the school district does have a bit broader taxing perimeter, a high percentage of our patrons outside the city's boundaries work and shop in the city's taxing spaces. We are requesting the waiver due to the fact that our entities being taxed are also the same entities that are being taxed by the city, so significantly the same population. Great schools are certainly one of the backbones of a great community, and we hope that our facilities allow Marysville to shine and to help draw further residents to Marysville, helping the city. We stand for questions.
Discussion.
I know it's probably a little early to be asking, but parking, always a problem, always something I know the city and the school have needed to team up on.
Sure.
Um, is there a plan connected to this moving forward that can help address that potentially, or is that completely outside the scope of this new project?
Uh, not completely. I could tell you what our plan is, I don't have an answer, but I could tell you what our thoughts are going forward. Obviously, the blocked parking lot that was put into place, where the many, many in that house used to be, that we're now kind of counting on for that parking space, that will be taken by this new building. We will Wednesday night at our board meeting, put together a working group of a couple of our administrative team, our janitor, and a couple of board members, and hopefully an individual from our community that knows something about construction, and start the conversation of what do we do with those two buildings that are currently out there? We wanna make sure that we go through the entire conversation before we might tear either or one or parts of one or the other down, that we absolutely see zero use for those going into the future. If it would come back that the working group would make the recommendation that one or both of those buildings come down, then obviously, you know, the thought process going forward would be that that space would be made into a parking lot. I don't know if that's really answers your question, but...
Yeah, I kinda wondered.
Have an answer, really?
No, I, I understand.
We just wanna make sure that we, we ask every question possible, so that if we do tear one of those down, we're confident, but we can't just leave them stand and continue to pay utilities if there's no purpose for them. Anything you'd like to add? Okay. Any other questions I can help with? I do, if, I, I wasn't at this, but I do believe the planning commission met Wednesday, Thursday?
Thursday.
And approved the building permit, correct?
Not the building permit, the, the site plan.
Oh, the site plan, okay, sorry. Excuse me. That's in the works.
If this building permit fee is waived, can you guarantee that you're not paying that fee to your contractor? It's probably in the mobility, or mobilization. Okay.
Sorry.
'Cause we, we don't want you, we don't wanna forgive this and then you still pay for it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Another disconnected question, I'd hate to be the devil's advocate tonight, but, another continuing piece of conversation is, I know you've had some changes on the school board and we've now had more changes on the city council, is how we're gonna work together as far as funding future recreational connected projects and facilities? Is that something the, the board was willing to have continued conversation on as far as working with us, especially when it comes to off-school grounds, facility maintenance, and projects that have historically, there's been a lot of teamwork between the two sides, but it's been at a bit of a stalemate for the now almost nine years I've been on, on city council. Ongoing concern, I just wanna make sure that there's, you know, us showing goodwill and the school board showing goodwill, and we can work together on these things. Is that something you foresee?
I can promise we can work together and we can have conversation. I think that the question, and, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the question in the past has been whether we would be willing to pay for, like some things over the tennis courts, there are rules and regulations in place that don't allow us to do that. And so, we can't pay for things of that nature on property that doesn't belong to us, but that's not to say that we couldn't have conversation. I know a lot of it depends on state funding and us being able to support the things that we already have in place and see if there's anything left. Same as kind of you guys, city or budget, but I can promise conversation, I'm not sure how much more I can promise.
Yeah, I think there's power in conversation between two taxing entities and putting their thoughts together and finding plans to figure out how to maintain and how to update those kinds of facilities.
Right, and I mean, and I know that it was twenty odd years ago now, but a compromise was found before with the construction or a way around the rules and regulations. I've been on school board and I've obviously been on city council now, so I, I know that there's, you know, a needle to be threaded there, I just wanna make sure that there's willingness, as you see it, on both sides to, to do that work, because a lot of times it can be contentious amongst governmental bodies and, and we, we don't want that, I don't think, any more than you do, so.
No, no, but you have a Parks and Rec subcommittee, correct? So maybe we could designate a couple of individuals that have a more particular interest in that conversation from our group, and just sit down with your Parks and Rec group and see where we could, you know, where we can come with that, if that works.
Austin, how much time is Dave gonna have in on this project?
Depends on how forthcoming, I mean, he did go down quite a bit to, to check on gas lines and, and what was going on with the school, the school project, smaller building, I mean, obviously, I think the, the number is, is based off of possible work being put in. I mean, it's, but, as Dave put it earlier, that, I mean, it is tax dollars paying for it, and, and it's a, it's a give and take. If, if they can get rid of the fee out of their, their, their key, then it might be better for everybody.
Did we, we waive it on the previous?
No.
Didn't, did we? I remember that being contentious, but I don't remember what happened.
No, the eight thousand dollars they paid.
'Cause it was in the, in the bid, and it didn't come off.
It couldn't come off.
And it did not come off the bid, so they weren't gaining anything.
Was this already incorporated in the, in the bid?
So that's how come he asked that question?
Yeah.
I mean, normally it is, if they already have a bid, it's already in there.
Right, but it, this was, to my understanding, I'll have to go back and look, this is not part of the bid.
I don't know how it couldn't be. Everybody's got mobilization. They've already got it in there, they had to, they called us to ask what it would be.
Well, we'll make sure, if the bid has not been approved yet, so we'll make sure it is approved.
Okay, yeah, that's the key.
So we're gonna wanna make a, we're gonna make a motion then that we would waive the fee contingent on that they know for sure that they, it is not included in their bid?
Can we do that?
Or that they reduce their bid.
Or they reduce it if it's, yeah, if they can just pull it out by that amount.
How will we know? We haven't seen the bid, so how will we know? I mean, if I'm the bookkeeper, I have to figure it out, how will we know?
Well, let's see the bid.
Provide you with a bid?
No. Yeah, no, that's all I'm saying, that's fine.
Any more discussion?
Devil's advocate, I guess, um, option, if you would trust us, you could have them pay the mobilization and we refund it.
There you go.
I mean, that's, if, 'cause usually the, you have them pay, have them pay for, usually they don't go, this is permit fee. They go, this is mobilization, this is what gets us there. And so, it's, it's their insurance, it's their, it's their vehicles, it's, it's the stuff. So it's the permit fees. So I would be hesitant, and this is me, hesitant, unless they go, okay, we'll take twenty-five-hundred-and-seventeen dollars or whatever money out of there, that's fine, unless you can guarantee that. But, I mean, that's, that's me talking from my perspective as, as an administrator.
And since the bids have been approved, and we, I mean, we can certainly, the board can certainly approve bid pending that there is no permit cost.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. And what's council, what do you wanna do?
We have to do this, how do we have to afford this?
Austin, it would be just as easy for them to come to us and reimburse them back.
That's the bookkeeper right there. The, the part that's gonna be hard is that unless they can show you the bid, every one of those... No, no, what he's saying is they pay us and we reimburse them. And we can reimburse them, but how, how... Is that easy? Is that... No, it's not easy. It's easier just not to do it.
Want to match?
No, it's easier not to do it.
That was a question.
I mean, that is, yeah, that's the question, it's just that, like I said, every one of these companies that bid this have already called us and asked us what the permit fee is gonna be. So they put it into their bids, we know that.
We don't wanna write this off to enrich a contractor.
Correct, and that's what we'd be doing, and that's why they didn't do the eight thousand.
I guess all I can guarantee is we'll bring you the bid. We have a...
Right, I mean, it's just you negotiating with your guys, saying, okay, we know that you have this much in the bid, it has to come off.
Right. Which Dr. Guy can certainly do.
Sure.
As we work through it.
Okay.
Should we move to waive it on contingent on evidence of it being...
Not there, yeah. I mean, not charged, not charged, yeah.
Well, one way or the other, they're gonna have to pay it, so it doesn't really make that much difference, right?
What do you mean?
Well, they're either gonna pay them or they're gonna pay us, one or the other.
No, the, if we waive the permit fee, they're gonna try to make sure they're not being charged for it.
Right, but they're either gonna, if they pay the contractor, then they don't have to pay, I mean...
Yeah, my fear would be the contractor would reclassify it, and it would just be the same thing somewhere else, accounting tricks.
Right.
Yeah.
But, but...
Maybe.
I mean, you could act in good faith. I mean, that's, that's where, where we're at, we can't guarantee anything.
But it's gonna cost them anyway, so.
If you don't, if you don't charge us and the contractor doesn't charge us, it won't cost us.
Right, well, if you can get the contractor so they don't charge you, that's the big question.
When are you supposed to get this settled with the contractor? When, when is this all gonna be decided to settle with the contractor?
Uh, the board is in negotiations tomorrow, or Wednesday evening with the contractor. I know they're working on some guy in here. Right now, they're working on some engineering here as far as ways to back the price now. But this is one of those areas. And we discussed this and trying to reduce the cost by a couple of the MFP as well. So it's part of the value engineering that board is going through right now to reduce.
We had multiple things within the building that, I mean, you're all aware. We're working with a community partner and between the two of us, we're looking in every corner of everybody's purse and pocketbook to make sure that we're, we need everything that's in the building and that there's no way to do it more cheap, you know, that there's not a way to do something more cheaply that still gives us a fine product in the end. And so, we're looking at everything and this is one of those pieces.
Are we, we have a motion, right?
No.
Did not.
I think they need to check with their contractor and then come back.
They can't wait till our next meeting is why it's here.
They what?
We're hoping to break ground anytime. Because we're hoping for a completion date before school starts, so that we're not trying to move kids and facilities after the next year's school begins. So hopefully, we will break ground before you meet again. Or at least need the permit.
Can't we do the permit without them paying and then?
No, we can't treat them like anybody else.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we waive the school building permit of $2,517.75 in lieu that their contractor reduces it off of their bid.
Okay. Got a second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is in hearings.
Consent agenda.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second. All right. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Presentation of appropriations ordinance number 3715.
Move to approve ordinance number 3715, the amount of $118,034.70.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oh, roll call, that's right on this one.
Feigman?
Yes.
Pipia?
Here, yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Frye?
Yay.
Schroller?
Yes.
From?
Yes.
Baron?
Number yet.
Not yet.
Okay, and no Barnes, yeah. Seven zero.
Okay, staff reports.
All right. First item up, below the conferences that I would like to go to this year, I did not include the ICMA conference as I do not plan to attend. Please approve me my going to these conferences as they help me stay informed of current issues and train for future matters. The first one is the Kansas Rural Water Association Water Conference, Annual Water Conference in Wichita, March 24th to 26th. The next one is Kansas Association and City Managers Spring Conference in Lawrence, April 23rd and 24th. And the third one is League of Kansas Municipalities Annual Conference in Wichita, October 10th through 12th. And the last one is the Kansas Association and City County Managers Annual Conference in Grapevine, December 2nd through the 4th.
How many conferences did you go to last year?
Four. And that included the ICMA.
ICMA?
Yep.
Which one of these did you not go to last year?
The annual conference. The Leaks Conference, yeah.
So you have two manager conferences?
The, yeah, they're completely different ones. One is the more education oriented, the one in Lawrence, it's at their, it's kind of run by the, one of the KU Public Administration Associations. They do more education-based information at that one. And then the second one, the annual conference, is more practical. We get to go out and see what cities are doing. Specifically, this one will be Grapevine. We get to go out into the community, see what they're improving and learn from them and learn from ourselves. So it's, they're run, they're technically under the same association, but they're two completely different things.
So out of curiosity, why do you plan not to go to the ICMA this year?
It's in Canada.
Are you wanted in Canada?
I plead the fifth. I mean, that works in Canada, though.
Move to approve the city administrator to go to these four conferences as presented.
Second. All right. Any other discussion?
I would only ask that you kind of recap this when we get back.
Okay.
I think that's kind of standard, but it'd be nice to know kind of some stuff you picked up or might be useful.
I try my best. I won't try my best. I will, I will do it.
That's great, yeah.
Yeah. It's kind of hard. I get back, I start writing stuff down and then all of a sudden, life hits me back.
You should just blog it while you're there.
Okay, if we pay to go to the meetings, and I think you should.
Yeah, it's nice to know.
Let us know what you did.
And it's kind of, I mean, I can say this from going to conferences myself, if you're thinking about things in that way, too, you might pick up on some other stuff that you might have not noticed.
Right.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Next one up is Local Government Day, which is January 22nd in Topeka. January 27th, I think that's a Wednesday, right? Yep, Wednesday. I've already got, this is where we go talk to our state representatives about the issues that affect us locally. We also get legislative update typically from the Senate Majority Leader and Minority Leader in all different aspects. Last year, we had the Lieutenant Governor talking to us about their affairs. One year, we had the Governor show up. It's pretty informative. We also get a legislative update from the League of Kansas Municipalities. And then, like I said, we meet with our representatives. I have tentatively, and this may talk you out of it if you're already thinking about it, tentatively scheduled meetings at 8:00 AM and 11:15. The tentative one is 8:00 AM because they don't know what boards are going to meet. Senator Barris has two of them that, she'll find out Wednesday if they're going to meet this early on in the, in this Wednesday, not next Wednesday, obviously. But, so I'll get a call back regarding that one. Hopefully, it'll be a later time. Bobby and Jason have already committed. You can't get out of this, Bobby, no. So if anybody else wants to go, we're leaving.
It's all Misses Coffee, I don't.
We'll make arrangements for that. If Diane's already expressed interest, but she said if somebody else wanted to go, I'd be happy to take you. She, yeah, that's where we're at. If you want to let me know later, think about it. It's a really good time. I will be coming back for the JL forum on that day, so.
How soon do you need to know?
This week or, I mean, yeah, this week would be great if possible. Okay. Next thing, financials. At the end of 2019, the general fund was at $602,121. This is $121,297 more than we budgeted to start 2020 and $143,771 more than we began 2019 with. The water fund increased from the end of 2018 by $13,601. The fund also carried over $147,872 more than we budgeted for in 2020. One of the issues, issue funds right now is sewer fund. It decreased by $111,353 from the end of 2018 to the end of 2019. Sewer fund also came in $8,773 lower than we budgeted for in carryover. While we're not too far off on budgeting, we are making some adjustments so we make sure we build up our sewer fund rather than diminish it.
What caused us to fall short?
We kind of changed around some staffing to build up the water fund. Well, I mean, it did that. It built up the water fund. Now, we're diminishing on the sewer fund. We did go forth with $300,000, a little over $300,000 in CIPP.
Right.
We increased our transfer and just a lot of the maintenance things. I forget some of the.
I know we had.
More emergency things that happened.
I know we took the truck up to Lincoln to, they put a lot of money in the front head, sewer project.
Well, also, we had some stuff out there on those lift stations, that, those propeller pumps that we had.
Yeah, the lift station maintenance.
I think we bought two of those.
Yeah. A lot of unexpected things, but things that needed to be done, things why we have that much money sitting there. I mean, we didn't dip below our 90 days by any means, so we're still sitting good. I don't like to see them drop, though. Let's see. Sales tax fund decreased by $198,000 from 2018 into 2019, but did carry over $174,190 more than we budgeted for in 2020. So we are sitting good there. We look to build this year in sales tax. Since we did pay for our C-clip, I think that was the main culprit to diminishing our sales tax. I also included our projects. We pretty much completed all the projects in here. In fact, we just completed the Kester House Restaurant. He just dropped off his final bill. There is one thing that he was doing above and beyond his contract, which was installing a rail in front of the chairlift that matched the rest of the rails. So he had some leftover from installing the rail so he's, I mean, it's going to look really nice. So if you go, happen to go by the restaurant, take a look, he's got it all nice and painted up on the front. They did the pediment, colors you probably haven't seen in a while. And it looks really nice. Any questions? I do have one thing, just so you're not in the dark. We did have issues with our lagoon over the weekend. Cell four overflowed. Within the last week or so, there was a blockage between two and three or to, where water was, I think water was going from two to three. There was a blockage. We unblocked it and that really pushed a lot of water because two and three were filling up, pushed a lot of water to four. Thought it was holding it. Ended up Sunday, got a phone call. It hit a tipping point, which cell four is the finishing cell, so it's not like complete sewage. So, but we did submit a report to KDHE as required and waiting on a response from them. But you will hear just more about our lagoon system in the weeks to come. So we'll be talking, that's going to be a topic.
Is it because it's filling up?
It backed up a lot of water, but there's some other issues that we're going to have to talk about. The KDHE has pointed out to us in the recent weeks that we may, they're going to, they've put us on a plan. Let's just put it that way and we'll go over that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I forgot to check this. How's our Kester House, or this here, not Kester House, but like the outstanding collections? How are our collections doing? Or Jason, or Austin, I mean.
The what?
The collections, our outstanding collections for the state and the Bureau.
Have you got a report back on, on the collections Bureau? On the money we've?
Are we gaining on it?
I would have to compare it to whatever we had last time. I don't think it's changed a great deal. We have one large water account that we have to work on. That's, but otherwise, yeah. I mean, we'll get, we don't get much until right now. Now is the time.
Taxes.
Because everybody figures our taxes and we send it all into set-off. Our collection agency also uses set-off, which means that when these people get their taxes figured, then instead of getting refunds, they, we get them. And that's, so if we primarily get money in the first few months of the year. So yes, we send them all in, we do everything we can. So, yes.
So it's paying off to do what we're doing then, so.
Oh, yeah. The state set-off has helped us a great deal and even the agency that we hired requires us, us, to send this stuff to state set-off anyway, so.
So we'll be looking for more money at the beginning of the year.
Now, at the beginning of the year, when everybody's filing.
Okay, because we haven't mentioned it for a long time and I didn't know how we were doing as far as.
We change it every month. I mean, if, with what we get.
Right.
Right.
I know you do, but I keep forgetting to check it and see where we're at, so. Okay.
So we got, okay, before we get to the standing committee, I forgot to bring up during notices and hearings, Darlene left a update or kind of a summary of what they went over at the planning commission meeting last week on January 9th. And the commission approved the site plan for proposed office building for Propp Family Investments. And the commission reviewed a site plan for proposed addition to the Mary's Laverian Church. Church representative had three requests that the city move the cul-de-sac on Frank Marshall Drive to the south, combine lots one, two, and three into lot 1A and reduce the required setback. The commission had some questions on drainage. And the commission will require a set of plans to approve prior to conducting a public hearing. And also, the commission approved a new site plan for the Ag Building for MHS on the gravel lot. Roof stormwater will be piped to the stormwater system. And the commission did not acquire if there are any future plan, parking lot plans. So. Yep. Okay, standing committee reports?
I had a question on streets. The corner of Carolina and we'll call it Upper Nice since Nice Street's two places at once, above the WPA stairs. I know it's narrow there because of that stone wall, but apparently we can't get our lay-down machine through there. But it is really, really crappy. I mean, it's worse than a lot of places. I mean, it might be one of the worst streets in town now because we can't get in there with our equipment. So my question would be, is there a way we can do it without that equipment? How did we, I mean, pave it before? If we need to do it by hand? If we need to look at options for widening the right-of-way in that?
I think we've been, we've been looking at that. I'll ask Gary, I thought Gary had a plan.
That rough, the street all the way up to Alston is rough because people taking that turn and coming up, it's really chopped up.
I think it happened when we had to replace that guardrail on that person went over the guardrail. So that moved it so we no longer could get around that corner. Before we could, but the guardrail had to move.
Yeah, it was pretty tight.
And I think it has to do with the guardrail.
So I don't know what we need to do for options. Obviously, it's winter, we're not going to do anything right now, but.
Yeah.
Another season and it's only going to be in worse shape. It's noticeably deteriorating, so.
Yeah, we've had conversations on and off about that, me and Gary anyways, about what we could possibly do.
Okay, great.
Mysterious cone on Fifth Street in Carolina.
That takes a lot more work than just removing the cone and maybe putting concrete around it.
Call it a roundabout. Call it a roundabout.
It'd probably be easier to install those signs than to fix this problem. We have to basically replace the top portion of that manhole because they, I think they went in and tried to fix it, and it got worse. So, the solution is to replace the top cone and?
That's fine.
Yep.
It's been goned up for six months.
For a better, so?
Yes.
Yep. Haven't forgot about it, though.
Anything else on street? Water and wastewater treatment? Do you have anything? Okay, Parks and Rec?
The, I don't know if this is where it would belong or not. We're going to say Parks and Rec. The Main Street Office Building down there that the city owns, near the trail, along the trail there, until you get quite a way south, there isn't water available. For, I know some community events, which I may or may not advise on and help with, it'd be awfully nice to have water closer to the Broadway intersection there. I know we've done a little bit of work with water on that building, and there's currently no spigot on the outside of it, I don't believe.
Probably not.
And I know there'd be some questions about the best way to do that so it couldn't be damaged, wouldn't freeze, et cetera. But I think it might be worth exploring to facilitate community activities, whether it's the car show or the gravel dash or whatever, to see if we could have a locked spigot there to use for those events. I think it would make it a little easier for some vendors or sit to set up or for some other projects like that at minimal expense. So, I don't know if that's water. I don't know if that's streets or?
It's Parks and Rec. I would consider that.
I was like, Seven Street corridors apart, right?
Yeah.
So, if that's something we can kind of look at, options for, you know, that's coming here, I think that'd be great.
Yep.
Anything else on Parks and Rec? Cemetery and Airport? Police and Fire? Admin and Finance? Nothing there?
I have a question, just in general. Council committees, when do those usually get reshuffled? At your pleasure?
At my pleasure, yes.
I was just curious.
We'll talk about that.
Okay.
Anything else on Admin and Finance? We just have appointments and wage determinations. I've nominated Jared Argo, Lynn Runabom, and Derek Martin as an alternate to the Planning and Zoning Committee.
I move to approve the mayor's appointments to the Planning and Zoning Committee.
We'll get a second and then discussion.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Is that, is Jared a little bit of a conflict of interest, maybe?
Well, I don't know. We've got quite a few people on there that are?
He can recuse himself.
He can recuse himself if something comes up, I'm sure.
He can make some kind of expert things. It's kind of a double edged sword of conflicts.
We typically have like an engineer or some, which is the same aspect of the thing. Usually, it's the owner that comes forward to present ideas and, yeah, it's usually, you want the expert on the board to make decisions like this. So, it's, I mean, it's not how to go, how to do the ordinary.
And we've got him on both committees, the zoning Board of Appeals and the zoning committee?
Yeah, the appeals, and I think they've met like once in the last year.
One of, one of the people that's on Planning and Zoning needs to be on the zoning Board of Appeals.
Is that how they do it?
Yep.
And then I've nominated Coley Behrens to fill my vacant seat.
I move to approve all the mayor's appointments.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Six more. Okay. City Attorney?
I have nothing. Roundtable? I was going to call an executive session, too. I don't see it on there, but?
Do it, do it.
You want to do an executive session now or after roundtable? I move the city council recess.
Oh, I can't do that again.
The American. But tell them what it's about.
Oh, I don't want it.
Tell everybody what it's about.
It's about land acquisition.
I move the city council recessed executive session for preliminary discussion relating to the exist, accusation?
Acquisition.
Acquisition of real estate pursuant to KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B six. This meeting will include mayor, city council, and city administrator. Meeting will resume in the council chamber.
Fifteen minutes.
Oh, and city attorney. Fifteen minutes?
Yep.
Let's just go seven forty, or no, eight fifteen then. How about that?
All right. Move. All in favor?
No.
Somebody say second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Got out of here now?
You thought you were going to get right out of here to the football game, didn't you?
System football game.
I don't, I don't care about the football. You're messing with me. Go on the leg.
You're blocking before you come.
It's easy to say when you're driving.
Thank you.
I might need it again.
You might. Yes, you might. Depends on how fast you can talk.
I might need it again. Never know.
Exactly.
No binding, no binding action was taken, so we'll move on to the next item. Roundtable. I guess I'll do it first here. Okay, I had a few things I was just going to throw out there, and these aren't anything we've got to discuss tonight at all, but I was just going to kind of throw them out there that way you guys have a couple of weeks to think about them. I would like to schedule a workshop in the next few weeks, possibly Monday, February third is kind of what I'm thinking after the next council meeting. Just have a workshop to just get together and kind of throw ideas, decide what our priorities are going forward in this, in this, in this year. And department heads might have a meeting maybe before that where they can kind of discuss what maybe some of their priorities are, and they can bring those to the meeting as well to kind of discuss.
I won't be able to make that one.
What's that?
I won't be there at that one. It's my birthday, I'm not coming.
I can't blame you for that.
You could come and bring trees.
I'm out of state. And not Nebraska.
Okay, another thing, I would like the governing body to look into reconciling the differences between what our city code, the governing body handbook that we get when we get elected, and the league's governing body handbook say about the mayor's role. And I realize we're a strong mayor city, so there's limitations on what can be changed as far as the wording and what the American can't do. But just think about it for the next couple of weeks, maybe read through our codes and through the league handbook and kind of compare. And the league, too, I'm sure would have a lot of information if you wanted to reach up, if any of the council members want to reach out to them for the next couple of weeks.
Jason, speak up a little.
Oh, can't hear?
No, he can't.
Okay.
He's mumbling.
Need a better mic. I would like the governing body to look into reconciling the differences between what our city code, the governing body handbook that we get when we get elected, and the league's governing body handbook say about the mayor's role. And I realize that we are a strong mayor city, but I would like council to look into more clearly defining the mayor's role, and I'm sure that the league would have a lot of information if you give them a call. And otherwise, I'd say you kind of look through our code book and compare it to what the league, league has to say about it. I'd like to see that kind of reconciled. I could make it easier going forward. If you have a question, you call the league if it was worded more closely to what the league has as far as what I can and can't do. So, that's one of them. Also, in the past, there were card tables at the ends of the U here for the press, and then in the years, in the last few years, they kind of stopped that practice. And I was curious if council would be in favor of allowing those card tables to go back? Or another, another thing that was discussed was possibly a table in the front row that would keep them up front but kind of back behind the podium where they could hear more clearly and have a little table to kind of take notes and work.
I am okay with the way it was before. We had the table right there for the press. I'm okay with that.
Like I say, something to think of for the next couple of weeks, maybe we'll get it on the agenda for next time or?
They agree with it.
Yeah, if they agree with it, so.
Do it.
And as far as seating, I don't know if you guys want to change anything. I think in the past, seating was according to the wards. So, I don't know if anybody?
It's been one, two, three, four while I've been on here, and it's been one, one, ward two, ward three, ward four. It's just?
This is the third place I've sat.
It's not easier for your constituents on camera to know they put the ward seating there.
Yeah. So, I'm kind of wondering what your thoughts were on that. I know Kevin wants to sit at the end there, so I don't think that'll be a problem. Nobody wants that end seat anyways, probably. And I guess it's more you guys on that side, if you'd rather be grouped according to ward or how you'd like to do that.
I had my share on you already of this spot. One, two, three, four is fine with me on each side.
They may have a problem, bring more discussion on that. We'll probably just do that then. Just go one, two, three, four, and Kevin gets the end. Also, it's come to my attention that in other cities, the governing body gets paid for meeting, and if you miss a meeting, you don't get paid. Is this anything the council would be interested in? I know, yeah.
I don't know. I mean, it seems like one more thing to keep track of, but that's my first thought.
I'm just throwing it out there. And if, if we would count meetings, it will, we also include some workshops as part of that total count. I mean, because we usually have at least one workshop a quarter, so would you say twenty, you know, twenty-eight meetings a year and then divide what we make according to that? And if you miss one, you don't?
You have a perfect attendance bonus, too?
Yeah.
Gold stars.
Gold stars.
I can get a star.
Cookies, cookies at the end of the year.
Yeah. It was something that was brought to my attention, so I thought I'd throw it out there, and we can discuss it further, maybe the next council meeting or the workshop. This last week, we got the, the agenda packets out on Thursday. Would council like to continue to, as long as we can, get those out on Thursday? It's my feeling that it gives you Friday, so if you have any questions, you can call on Friday and then get some more research over the weekend instead of getting slammed with it on Friday and then not being able to do anything until Monday.
It's nice.
Yeah, it gives you a little bit more time to prepare, I think, for the meeting.
Was that the reason we did this time?
No, I think it just worked out. We had a short, it wasn't long on the agenda.
It worked out that way.
We used, we used to, and then it got to where it was Friday.
And I'm sure why that happened in the past is because you're always going to have people who come last minute, and they want to be put on the agenda, and then unfortunately, you're going to have to tell them it's too late, and then they're going to have to show up and ask to be placed on the agenda.
And we can do that as long as we know. I mean, our policy technically, if you read the paper, says we need it by Wednesday.
At noon.
At noon. So, that gives us that time to call them or whatever. So, and, and I was pushing, I mean, this school, I had to push them because they had their meeting on Wednesday night, and I said, I got to have it because we're publishing on Thursday noon.
Did we get highlights today?
You'll get them on Friday.
I know, but we didn't get them on Friday, so did we get them today?
We'll get them on Friday. This coming Friday. We'll get two weeks.
So, they only come on Fridays? So, if we miss one, then we get double the next week?
Yeah. I mean, it's, we got, we got some of them in, but with what happened last week, they got to continue to work. Yeah, it was.
You mean, somebody did get some this week?
No. No, they, some people turned them in to us.
Oh, I see. Your heads did.
Yeah.
I see. But we didn't get them.
Right.
Okay, so everybody's kind of in favor of getting them out on Thursdays?
Yeah.
I know Diane mentioned that a couple of weeks ago, too. I think you're more prepared, I think, if you got another day in there, so. And here's another thing, I'm just throwing out there, it probably won't work, but in the past, it's been brought to my attention that the governing body used to have short working lunches on Friday. They would get, they would have working lunches on Friday where they would get together, discuss some of the items on the, it was non-binding, kind of like a workshop, basically, and they would get together and discuss the, some of the items. Then any questions, that way they could ask them. The bad thing about that is if you don't make the meeting on Friday, then you're coming into Monday, kind of add, some people discussed it and something happens, so.
Well, that would take Kevin out, myself, Keith, Todd, yeah, Gina. So, y'all would be like the Lone Rangers.
Yeah, it's, I don't think it'll work, but it's something that was, that somebody mentioned to me, and I thought, well, we'll think about it.
Lee said they used to get together on the Friday night before the meetings for an hour or so after everybody got off work. You know, as long as you didn't have anything else to do, and I'll just have it for a specific time, like right after the city closed, get together. You know, you'll have your packet on Thursday, so you can hash things over on Friday. And that way, the meeting supposedly go, but he said it makes the meeting go quicker. It's like he said, not going to be any binding decisions. You know, you're just going to, whatever questions we have, maybe get them answered then, and we're, like they said, more prepared. That's what one of the councilmen from way before, that's what they used to do.
Never heard of it.
Mayor, was that before maybe the open meeting, I kind of got?
And that's possible. Because it was back in, I think, the eighties, nineties, as long as you announce it.
I was going to say, you'd have coma then to worry about, wouldn't you?
Yeah, not if it's an open workshop, but?
Probably better investigate that first before we decide.
If, if nobody's in favor of it, I'd say we just drop it. This is something I threw out there.
I'm not in favor of it, so.
Okay, that's fine. Otherwise, that's it.
On your workshop meetings, what, what times have you been doing?
Six?
Yeah.
We've done them at five fifteen.
Five fifteen, I think we start.
We've done them at seven. It depends, I mean?
Whatever.
I assume between five thirty and six. That's six.
I mean, you guys can decide what time you want them to be, so that's, you have to tell us what works, if it doesn't.
I think we've always said that they start at five fifteen, but there's usually food, survey content, get some food, and they don't generally start until after that, yeah.
Then that's all.
We work, we work.
How long drive you got? Sometimes I may not get in to five thirty.
I know I can't be here at five fifteen, but we can take it when it comes.
Yeah, we'll figure it out. We got to change hours or whatever to get our day here, that's fine. So, otherwise, that's all I had. Keith?
Yeah, last time when I was on council, I brought up the stoplight on the intersection between Hardee's and Land O' Lakes, especially that side. During evening hours, I mean, just when the sun's going down, you can't see that top, you can't see the stoplight because the sun's behind you, and you can't see it when the visors are down. And I checked on what the cost would be to put a, one on the side, like it is coming from the other side, but there's nothing on that side where you can tell.
Okay.
If that's something that can be added on to that pole.
How much would that cost? I'll see then.
I don't know. I'll check into it.
That's all I got.
Bobby?
No.
Gina? Terry?
I have one question. I was wondering, what's the city's policy, just like the other day when it's closed? Somebody maybe ought to be around here in town just to shut this whole place now. What if we had an emergency or something? I'm just, what's the policy?
The police open it up if we have an emergency.
The police?
Yeah, we have, we have a policy in place, just that. If on the weekend it's a blizzard, people lose power, generator's on, we can use it. The, the police open it up.
I just wondered if somebody, if there was an emergency, I'm just wanting to find out. That's all I have.
We got that taken care of, yeah.
Anything else? Anything else?
Well, that's it for me.
Just welcome to the new mayor and councilperson, soon to be person. That's it.
Someone suggested that when they had the Christmas lights, you know, it didn't come out into the paper until after that the winners were, and then they went around to see the lights, and some of them had already turned them off, if maybe they couldn't keep on, at least the winners couldn't keep them on until at least after Christmas, or till that weekend after Christmas, or maybe New Year, so that they could actually see who the winners were, if they hadn't seen them. So, and then, if, and when they have the recycling, that if it's postponed, can they do it the next weekend? Can they cancel it till the next weekend, instead of waiting another whole month? You know, because we, I know, I know we've gotten to where we don't pay them if they don't have it, but maybe we could make an agreement with the church, if they could cancel it, and to the next weekend? I don't know who you talk to.
I think that's just another reason to have to change the way we do recycling.
Well, I know, I know, that would be nice, but for people that do count on it, you know, it gets a little, but that was something-
They're dependent on volunteers, so it's-
Well, I know.
Yeah.
I realize that, but, and then, I think that was about, oh, we used to have, a long time, I think it was before, I think when Denny was on the first time, or the time before, they used to, we used to have a list of tabled items. I think Cindy probably remembers, you know, and that would have been, yeah, and that was kind of nice, you know, like this Hartley Ridge thing, or some of the things, you know, that get, and we forget, you know?
There was only one thing, the last time we had that, there was only one thing that was tabled, and it was house numbers, and we took care of that.
Yeah, but if we do, but, but now we kind of, we kind of have this Hartley Ridge thing, I know it's not really, it's not, it's not really tabled, but you know, if we do have things, we need to kind of-
So, there's nothing tabled at this time?
No, but we do have some things we kind of forget that we talked about, because I brought it up, and then Tamale forgot that I had brought it up again, you know, but it doesn't even necessarily have to be tabled items, just things that we've brought up, that maybe we could keep a list of things that need to be taken care of, maybe not tabled, but things we need to take care of.
With the Hartley Ridge, you, the council had given instructions on how we, how staff would handle it, or how we were supposed to go forward, so that wouldn't be necessarily what the council needs to take care of anymore, because you already did.
No, but we, but we need, we need to remember that it needs to be, that they need to do something about it, that we need to bring it up again, or that it should be, when, when they need to have done something with the streets up there.
That doesn't make sense.
That don't answer the question, Austin.
What's the question?
The Board of Appeals, not the council, we don't have any control over that.
Right, but the council did instruct us to make sure that kept going.
Okay, but do we know the date when? Do we know the date when we're going to do it?
Next Wednesday, not this Wednesday, but next Wednesday, yes.
You are.
Yes.
Okay.
Zone of boarding, Board of Zoning, whatever that is.
Okay, so, all right, so it's going to be brought up then, so, all right. But anyway, if we do have things, then maybe we need to remember that we start doing that, so, okay, that's all I wanted, that's all I had.
All right, Kevin?
I move to adjourn.
Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?